Let the public know that temporary public comment email may be sent to In order for it to be read into the record, it needs to be here by February 3rd, today is 3rd, by 4:00 PM of the day of the meeting. Please limit it to 250 words or less. In public hearings, we will take commentary in real time via email. You may also watch the meetings on YouTube at the city's website. And so, at this point, we will call the meeting to order and ask our police chief Greasy to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief Greasy. Get her back under me. Want to roll away? City Clerk Melanie?
Jones.
Present.
Lambert?
Here.
Lewis?
She's having...
Ms. Lewis?
She's having problems again with her... I'm sorry, I'm trying to text her. She's having problems with her sound again.
Okay. Technology. Okay, Ms. Lewis can't hear anyone. Now I see a microphone live for you, Ms. Lewis.
Okay.
There you are, now you're live.
Oh, I can hear you. Councilmember Lewis, roll call.
It's not that... She can't hear us, so she's not responding. I'm having her disconnect and sign back on. I mean, we can see that she's present if we want to move on. It's up to you, Mayor. She's gonna log off and log back on.
Okay, very good. We'll wait for her to do that.
She was working earlier, I don't know what happened. Here she goes, okay.
World of Zoomland, virtual land. School is all like this all day, too.
Lucy, do you maybe want to center it and have that information here in the council chambers? Do you maybe want to send her the phone number with the code so she can call in? Maybe she can hear better that way without being visual.
Okay.
Unfortunately, though, she won't be able to see the presentations if she does that, but it might be a temporary fix. You could watch it on YouTube.
Okay, give me a minute.
Thank you. Oops, she's back. Deborah, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now, thank you.
Thank you.
Never mind, Lucy, thank you.
And I'm here, Mr. Mayor. Call yet.
And the mayor is here, so we have a quorum. Now we will move to consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to approve the agenda with one correction on the numbers for the items submitted for voting, starting at number nine. We left out eight, so we need to change the numbers from nine, ten, eleven, twelve to eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Okay, the copy I have of the agenda has a number eight. So was that corrected?
Yes, that was actually a typo and the packet that was dropped off was corrected and she emailed the correct agenda to everybody the next day.
Okay.
All right, my air. Then I have a motion to approve the agenda on the submitted corrected agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lambert. I have a motion, Mayor Portim, Lewis, and seconded by Councilmember Lambert, to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis? Councilmember Yamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda has been approved. Moving on to item five, presentation. Do we have anyone here to receive the proclamation? I will go ahead and read it. I will show everyone this American Legion's beautiful brochure for Chaplains Day, February 3rd. Whereas February 3rd, 2021, will mark the 78th anniversary of the sinking of the troop ship US Army Transport Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four US Army chaplains of three faiths who stood united in prayers as the ship went down. And whereas these four chaplains, Roman Catholic, Jewish, and Protestant, gave their own life jackets to four soldiers and thus sacrificed their own lives to save the lives of others. And whereas the heroic deeds of chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, Lieutenant Alexander D. Good, Lieutenant John P. Washington, and Lieutenant Clark V. Holding, and their combined act of supreme devotion and sacrifice for American liberty and human freedom will be an inspiring and ever-shining example of real brotherhood for all time to the people of the United States and the world. Whereas we must all see to it that their supreme sacrifice to the common cause of human freedom and justice for all shall not have been in vain. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and city council members of the city of Los Manos do hereby recognize February 7th, 2021, as Four Chaplains Sunday and encourage all to give special recognition to the memory of those who sacrificed their lives for the cause of freedom. And it has my signature and the signature of the deputy city clerk. So, thank you for your service. Thank you for those of you that brought this to our attention so we could make the proclamation tonight. Next on our agenda is the public forum. And that members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers may submit their comments by submitting a written statement limited to 250 words or less, by dropping it off in the utility payment box at City Hall 520 J Street, by mail, or emailing thecityclerk@lostmanas.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the city council meeting. City Clerk Melanie, do we have any comments this evening in the public forum?
Um, yes, I have received one comment.
Very good.
And it reads as follows. It is dated 2/1/2021, City Hall. My name is Claudia Nunes. I am writing this to you because I live in the Mobile Home Park off of Pacheco. There are a bunch of homeless people right next to us who have music on at all hours of the night. 1, 2, 3, 4 AM. I have called the police and nothing is done. They have fires going also. If those fires get to our homes, they will all burn down. I have called and talked to Officer Mendez about all of this and left him messages and he doesn't call me back. Please help us. A lot of people who live at the park are disabled and would like and would be in trouble if their homes catch on fire. And it's signed Claudia Nunes. And let me just refresh my email to see if we've received anything of late. Um, we have received no other comments by email.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the consideration of approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a council member. City Clerk Melanie?
The items on the consent agenda are as follows. For numbers 225351 through 225495, in the amount of $725,545.98. Second quarter investment report for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Minutes for the January 6th, 2021 city council meeting. Minutes for the January 14th, 2021 adjourned city council meeting. Minutes for the January 20th, 2021 city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6315, amending the 2020-2021 fiscal year budget in the amount of $63,000 as it pertains to revenues and expenditures for Senate Bill Local Early Action Planning Grant. City Council Resolution Number 6316, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement between the city of Los Manos and Planet Geo to prepare an urban forest management plan and tree inventory. City Council Resolution Number 6317, authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number 6 to the Landscape Maintenance Services Contract between the city of Los Manos and Ronnie's Inc. and adopting a revised budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021 as it pertains to the general fund for the maintenance account. City Council Resolution Number 6318, approving and adopting Final Track Map Number 2015-04 Bracket Club Estates and Accompanying Subdivision Improvement Agreement, applicant Hassan Hamadi. City Council Resolution Number 6319, approving and adopting Final Track Map Number 2005-05 South Brook at Los Manos, The Villages 4 Phase 2B, Unit 1, and Accompanying Subdivision Improvement Agreement and the applicant is Anderson Homes. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Council, if you'd like to pull an item, please let me know if you'd like to pull it just for discussion or for a separate vote. Councilmember Jones?
No items, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No items, Miss Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull Item G for discussion and a separate vote.
Okay. Suppose Item G? Mr. Yamas?
No items, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Measure G and then we'll handle Item G after the vote on the consent agenda. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item G?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ken.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the items minus G.
Very good. And Ms. Lewis, second on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, second motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion, Mr. Lambert, and a second from Ms. Lewis, to approve the consent agenda minus Item G. All in favor? Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. We will now go to Acting Public Works Director, City Engineer Peseshk for Item G and what Ms. Lewis has asked to pull.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the item that we have before you is a request that the city council adopt a resolution to enter into professional services agreement with Planet Geo to prepare an urban forest management plan and tree inventory for an amount not to exceed $125,395. Uh, we applied for a grant through the CAL FIRE Urban and Community Forestry Grant Program and we were fortunate enough last May to receive this grant. The grant provides us with the funds that we would need to prepare an urban forest management plan and tree inventory, uh, which will be the first of its kind for the city. Uh, in November of last year, uh, we issued an RFB, a request for proposals to bring on board a qualified consultant to prepare this urban forest management plan for us. And we received five proposals. As is our practice, we form a review panel and we did that in this, for this set of proposals. A three-member review panel which reviewed all the proposals independent of one another and ranked Planet Geo as the most qualified to provide the requested services. Then we checked references. The references all came positive, so it was the panel's recommendation that the city enter into a professional services agreement with Planet Geo. Overall, we expect that once we issue notice to proceed to Planet Geo, it will take him approximately 14 months to have the plan available to us for review. Uh, as far as the cost of this effort, we already have sufficient funds budgeted in our approved budget and the cost of the plan is 100% reimbursable through the grant itself. At this point, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Joe Heim, our Parts and Rec Operations Manager. He can give you a lot more detail about the grant itself and what the plan will actually accomplish for us. Mr. Heim?
Thank you. So, as Brett mentioned, we were fortunate enough to be awarded the grant last May. So, very excited to get going with it. As Brett said, it's the first effort, first plan from the city for urban forest, urban forestry. So, um, that's one of the biggest benefits from it is we have never had a tree inventory. We've never had an evaluation or analysis of our tree canopy. And then with this plan, it's going to help set tree canopy goals. So whether it's 10 years from now or 50 years from now, looking to expand our tree canopy, our shade canopy, this plan will look at all city trees, city maintained trees, so parks, right of ways, parking lots, things like that. Um, and the other thing that this grant will do for us is it'll make us more eligible for other grants within this program through CAL FIRE. So, grants such as large tree planting grants are within that CAL FIRE program that we can, that the city can apply for in future years if they choose to. So, and kind of another benefit is that through this process, one of the required elements through CAL FIRE is to update our tree ordinances and specifically our tree list. And so that's something we've been wanting to do for several years now. And so this will help us provide that analysis so to be able to move forward updating that list. So, if there are any questions, please...
Ms. Lewis? Questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Joe, you were saying that, uh, once this project is completed, it will give us the opportunity to upgrade our tree ordinances. What would that entail? Would it be the type of trees that we will be planting in the city of Los Manos that, uh, will have a better survival rate? I know, and in reading this proposal, I saw that medians, which are part of most strips in certain neighborhoods, we have trees that are planted there. I know in my district, in the original Anderson Homes, we have some trees that are... The roots are way above the ground level. Um, and I know it's going to take time to correct some of those issues and problems, but I would assume that this evaluation will help us determine if we have to plant trees back in areas like that, what type of trees we're going to be planting in a small space that aren't going to affect the uprooting as well as taking up sidewalks.
Yes, so updating the tree list would include, um, evaluating tree species. We have a general use tree list and a street tree list. Typically, the street tree list is, uh, less invasive root systems, things like that, that are more accommodating for areas next to concrete narrow strips, things like that. So, updating that list and then also with the tree inventory, evaluating, you know, where we need to put trees, where we have some areas that have had trees removed, what kind what kinds of trees, um, you know, are recommended for for those types of areas. So so right of ways, things like that. Um, and, um, and looking at, uh, the, I guess, uh, just general, uh, tree canopy in terms of we have large areas in town that have Modesto Ash that are on the older side. We have some, uh, Raywood Ash Trees that had some disease. So looking at, hey, we have a canopy in this area, but it's not necessarily one that we think is sustainable, um, moving forward. So how do we start to cycle that into sustainable trees that are are going to have a long lifespan for us? So, um, I think looking at all those things is will be included. Um, obviously, some of the the elements you're talking about would be, uh, addressed through some landscape, uh, specification updates. But the, uh, um, with the, uh, tree list and what evaluating how we we are, um, what we're planting in in the air, those areas that would, those would fall under this plan and the tree inventory. The tree inventory is going to pick up areas that, um, that have, like, uh, if there's a missing tree in a right of way, it's gonna, it's gonna say there's, that's a, that's a, uh, a spot for a tree. Whether or not we, you know, decide we want a tree there or not, that's obviously something we have to decide, um, later on. But identifying that location.
Okay. And within the, uh, uh, the specifications of their, how they operate or what they will do for the city, they'll be rating the trees, uh, that they evaluate from excellent down to dead. And then they also, uh, have submitted a maintenance need priority of removal or pruning or whatever the case may be. Um, and and I'm, I'm assuming that the city is is going to be diligent to follow this process that that they're going to recommend for us so that, you know, our our trees can become healthier or when when and if we, uh, plant new trees, uh, for the dead ones or the ones that are critical or in poor condition that may need to be taken out, um, that we're we're going to look forward with that process.
Yeah, that's one of the the benefits of this plan is that it's provide, it's going to provide analysis that we've never had before. Um, and for for me personally, I look at it as a great way, um, to strategically use our resources. Um, right now, obviously, we have limited resources to deal with, uh, with, uh, you know, fallen trees, trees that are grow, um, that, uh, are at risk, they're aging, things like that. Uh, so to be able to identify, okay, let's, let's make this plan of action in terms of of how we can use the resources that we have to, um, to best tackle the problem. Obviously, it's not going to add, um, you know, more funds or more staff or anything like that. But it is going to allow us to strategically say, okay, what can we do in this area? We see this is, this is a problem area. We, the the plan has identified a number of trees that have, uh, dangerous branches or or something along those lines or, um, this species of tree that we want to, um, start shifting out. It's going to allow us to, um, to make those decisions so that over, um, over our several budget cycles, we can shift to that that type of tree, whether it's a park location or a, uh, a streetscape or or whatever, um, area that it's in. Because a lot of our general fund parks have Modesto Ash. A lot of the older areas in town have Modesto Ash. So those sorts of things we want to shift. Um, and it's not just Modesto Ash, but that's an easy one to to point out.
Do you know whether or not this evaluation will include the, uh, trees that are are, um, planted on the rail trail between Pioneer and West Eye Street?
Yeah, Canal Trail, yes, um, yes, it will. So that's, those are city maintained trees. So this would be for city maintained trees. So whether it be a trail, park, right of way, median, um, city made the parking lot, city maintained trees.
Well, uh, it looks like it's a, the organization that's been chosen, um, they have some really nice, nicely qualified people that are, uh, going to be working on this project with us. Um, and it's, you know, it's really good to have some certified arborists on board and the way they're going to map out the whole process. So, you know, I just want to encourage you to encourage your staff to pick their brains as much as possible while we have this, the service that we're paying for so that we can use it, uh, for our city going forward. So thank you.
For sure. We'll definitely get to know them well. And Merce, uh, the city of Merced just completed theirs, I believe, about this time last year. Uh, the city of Tracy is in the process right now, and both of them went through the same grant process. So, um, it's, it's been nice to kind of watch, uh, neighboring cities. There's a lot of cities in the Bay Area, obviously, that have already completed theirs. But, uh, it's been nice doing that and, uh, um, definitely I'll get that, get to know them very well over the next year here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Um, we'll go to the rest of the council, see if anyone else has any questions. Mr. Jones?
No questions.
Mr. Lambert?
I have no questions here.
Mr. Yamas?
No questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Very good. Uh, shall I entertain a motion to approve item G on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to approve item G on the consent agenda as submitted.
I think I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis. Do I have a second?
Mayor, councilmember Lambert here, I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Portem Lewis and a second by councilmember Lambert to approve item G on the consent agenda, council resolution number six three one six. Ms. Melanie, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis? Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. Um, and it's exciting to see the trees being tended and improved. Trees are the beauty of your, a very big part of the beauty of your community. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we appreciate it very much. Number eight. Consideration of adoption of city council resolution number six three two zero accepting the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty fiscal year audit reports consisting of the comprehensive annual financial report and the government auditing standards report. And we will now go to Finance Director Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution, um, accepting the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty comprehensive annual financial report, also known as a CAFR. The CAFR presents a comprehensive picture of the city's financial positions and the results of our operations. It is designed to help the reader understand the financial condition of the city for each fiscal year. And the city's fiscal year begins on July first and ends on June thirtieth. Um, the auditors have issued a clean audit report, meaning that the financial statements and other information reported in the CAFR fairly represent the financial position of the city. Tonight, Josh Chiossa, Audit Manager, and Jorge Rodriguez, Audit Senior with Price Page and Company, are here to present the audit and answer any questions that council may have. Josh?
All right, well, can you guys hear me okay? Very good.
Yes.
Awesome, okay, I'll get started. Um, good evening, council, uh, Mayor Faria and, uh, the rest of council. Some new faces. Guess you just had an election pretty soon. So, um, welcome, I've been doing this now with the city for about seven years. I started as a consultant, not a consultant, I started as a senior, um, the first year of the audit and have been managing, I believe, the last five or six years of the audit. Uh, joining me tonight is Sonia, Sonia, you did my entire presentation, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. We, we have some newbies and I wanted to explain.
You're great, you're, no, just kidding. Um, I also brought along Jorge Rodriguez. He is the, uh, senior auditor and the in-charge auditor, um, for the city's audit. Doing it under this new format, not being there, it's a little different. Uh, length seems to be a little more brutal, so I'm going to do my best to, uh, do it as quickly as possible. And as Sonia said, if there are any questions, please feel free to ask. So does everybody have their financial statements available in front of them? If so, please go to page one. What I'm calling page one is actually about twenty pages in. It's the independent auditor's report. Give you just a second to get there. And if you're looking at a PDF in front of your computer, it's PDF page twenty one. All right, so my objective tonight is really to walk you through briefly the audit process and the audit report. After that, um, available for questions. So as I said, or as, just to go through to start, this first paragraph here is a report on financial statements. This really is just an explanation of what we were engaged to do, uh, as a part of the side, which was really audit the financial statements of, it lists a bunch of different things, government activities, business-type activities, each major fund. These are what we call opinion units. We provide an opinion on each, each one of these, what will be different columns throughout the financial statements. And what we're trying to do is give an opinion on whether the financial statements are not materially misstated or I think, as Sonia said, fairly stated. So there might be some errors, highly unlikely, but it's possible there could be some errors. If there are, it's our, it's our job to decide if there's any error that is material enough to change the opinion of a user of those financial statements. Okay? So that's what we're trying to do. If we were to come in and give absolute assurance, we would have to audit every single transaction and that would be, you'd have to hire us full-time. Right? So that's, that's our objective, that's what the report on the financial statements. The second paragraph really talks about independence, right? Independence is the, really the key of an audit. If an auditor is not independent, they cannot provide an opinion on these financial statements. So that requires management to take responsibility over certain things and then for the auditors to take responsibilities. Um, and so far as it relates to these financials. It's management's responsibility for these financials, two primary, two key factors. Number one, they take responsibility over the, um, preparation of the financial statements. Now, we do help the city with the preparation, but ultimately they make the final call. They are, um, and they ultimately take responsibility through what we call a management, um, representation letter. The second piece is that management must take, um, they must take responsibility over the design implementation and the maintenance over the internal controls relevant to the preparation of these financial statements. Auditors cannot be a control for the city. Us coming in during the audit is not the control. We review and get an understanding of the control, but really what we're doing is making sure that the numbers and the trial balance in these financial statements are not materially misstated. So those are managed, two of management's primary responsibilities. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on the audit we perform. We have our own set, so everybody's got a boss, auditors have bosses at all as well. Our boss, our organization that that, um, basically dictates the way that we have to audit, that sets our standards, is the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. And they promulgate the, um, the auditing standards, generally accepted auditing standards. Now, because Los, or Los Banos is is a government agency, there's a second set of, um, standards we have to abide by when we're doing our audits. And that is the generally accepted government auditing standards. So it's very strict list of rules that we have to follow in order to perform an audit. And one of the most strict is independence. You have to maintain independence. So what do we do in an audit? We assess risk. I already said we cannot look at every single transaction. So through a method of assessing risk, we're asking questions, we, we do a, um, there's a process we call Survey of Operations where we sit down with Sonia and Kim for a significant amount of time and ask them a lot of different questions. We send fraud questionnaires out, but we're just gathering information to find out if there's an error, if there's fraud, where would it occur? We also gain an understanding of the city's internal control. If there's any internal control weaknesses, well, that will become a risk that we will spend special time auditing, um, when we're actually performing our procedures. And finally, we, um, we do what we call analytical procedures or preliminary analytical procedures. One of the beauties of, um, maybe not everybody will think is beautiful that us accountants do, but double entry accounting is that you can make a prediction from one transaction on one side of a transaction, what has to happen on the other side of the transaction. So there is a relationship between accounts. And what we do is look for anomalies, um, in where these relationships should occur. So if we find anomalies, we go test that as well much closer. Right? So we get, we assess our risk, we figure out where the errors fraud may happen, then we develop what we call our audit procedures. We then perform our audit, we test our audit procedure. We test, we test, we test. As soon as we're comfortable that we have a reconsidered, uh, significant or sufficient audit evidence, we stop and we give our opinion. And our opinion, which is the last paragraph, um, Sonia, I already told you about it, but, um, what this says is the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respect respects. That means it is a clean audit opinion and it's, what the financial statements in front of you, these are good financial statements. That's what we're representing, that's the opinion we're giving, that council, any user can be confident when they look at these financial statements, that they are in good shape and in in accurate, um, financial information is included. The last piece I want to talk about, if you go to the next page, is a very last paragraph that says other reporting required by government auditing standards. I told you there was a separate list or there's a separate set of standards that we have to audit under the government auditing standards. What government auditing standards requires is that not only do we get an opinion or give an opinion on the financial statements, but we also have to gain an understanding of the city's internal or internal controls and compliance over financial reporting. Now, we do not give an opinion on the internal controls over financial reporting, but if we come across a, an instance or a controlled deficiency that we deem to be either significant or material, then we would be obligated to, um, communicate that to council. Now, this year, we did a, we revamped the way that we do our internal control walkthroughs and gain an understanding. It was a much more intensive process than we've had in the past because we think that we can add value to the city if we find, um, some controlled deficiencies, whether they know they exist or not. Well, um, I, I'd say it's, it's great to point out, it makes me upset because I like to, um, to, you know, provide some recommendations or better recommendations, but we did not find any controlled deficiencies that we consider to be significant or material. So again, it's, it's, it's a great thing for the city and it shows that Sonia and her team, um, continue to do an excellent job, um, really operating the finance department. Um, that's all I have for the report. I would like to direct you, we're not going to go through this, but beginning on page three through about page fourteen is the management discussion and analysis. This is a massive document, hundred-plus pages. It, it's, there's a lot of information in here. I would argue that the most important, most, um, most easily understood, the language is in Latin, it's plain English, is in these eleven or twelve, thirteen pages. This is management's analysis of everything that's in the financial statements. We do not audit this, but what we do is we read through it closely and make sure that what the city, um, what management is representing in this, um, in these ten or eleven pages are accurate in what we saw during the audit. So spend some time, read that, and you're going to get a great idea of what happened last year and what to expect next year. Um, just scanning, I, I did a little bit of scanning through the financials before we got on. And, um, as was the case last year, the city continues to be in a strong financial position. And not only that, but their, um, income or net changes in fund balance, nothing went negative last year. So the city continues to, um, do an excellent job with the stewardship over the city's, uh, resources. Um, and that will conclude my presentation. If anybody has any questions, I am happy to answer.
Thank you very much. I'll go to council and see if anyone has any questions. Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Mr. Lambert?
No questions.
Ms. Lewis?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yamas?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Outstanding work, everyone. Uh, outstanding work, there's just nothing but. There's just nothing but not much more to say. Uh Director Williams, anything else you want to add?
No, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on the excellent work. And with that, uh Chair will entertain a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number sixty-three twenty.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number sixty-three twenty as submitted and read by title.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Lewis, second?
Sure, I'm sure I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mayor Putnam Lewis and a second by Councilmember Yamas to approve City Council Resolution Number sixty-one. Ms. Mallory will call.
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Thank you very much. Outstanding work. Thank you very much, Finance. Finance Director Williams, please share our appreciation with your entire staff.
I will. Thank you.
Now we will move on to item nine. Oh, sorry, excuse me. Thank you very much. Uh, item nine, consideration of adoption of the City Council Resolution Number sixty-three twenty-one, adopting the Los Banos Parks Master Plan. And we will go to Acting Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Possession.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Joe Heim, our Parks and Rec Operations Manager, will be presenting this item. And as you read, we are requesting that the City Council consider and approve a resolution approving the Los Banos Parks Master Plan. Mr. Heim?
Thank you. So I think we're getting the presentation here up. Um, so I'd really like to thank um you know, everybody that's been involved in this process. It's something that we started um in November of last year. Uh, obviously, a lot has happened in the last year. Um, we had a very very large uh community meeting in January. We were planning to go um with the community meeting in March, but of course, we all know it happened in March. Um, so I'd really like to point out um my appreciation for our consultant, who is going to be doing the presentation, which is uh QK Engineering and Mike uh Rataisky and Spencer Stupinger, that's that's on with us tonight. Um, really appreciate their um willing to adapt to um to all the changes in the last year. We were able to hold a virtual meeting in September. We had an August, September uh community survey. Um, so we got a little bit delayed. Um, with COVID nineteen, we had to adjust to some virtual um meetings. Uh, but we've been uh very excited about this plan. Um, you know, going back through all of the input that we've had through the through the community. Um, it's just something that, you know, I was really excited to work on. Um, it's something that I hope, you know, carries momentum for Parks and Rec. Uh, I think we hadn't had a uh Parks Master Plan um since nineteen ninety-nine. And um it was something that that plan wasn't um it wasn't necessarily something that was professionally completed. So this is really um something that I hope provides direction for the Parks and Rec um division and um something that really gets us um going, whether it be um smaller projects, keeping up with projects or um looking at some larger projects in the future. So I'll uh I'll let Mike uh take over and I appreciate everybody that was involved.
Okay, thanks, Joel. Um, first of all, I want to um thank the uh city uh council members, mayor and city council for having us here today. Um, I also need to thank um Joe, uh the in in the staff of the Parks Department um for all their input and all their help. And I especially want to thank the residents of the city of Los Banos because without their input, without their involvement, um we we wouldn't have the document that you see before you in a waiting your approval today. Also need to thank the uh Parks and Rec Commission uh for their input as well. And uh um that was very helpful too. Okay, next slide. So introductions. Uh, well, as Joe had mentioned, yeah, I'm Mike Rataisky. I'm the park planner and I've been involved with public outreach on this. Spencer is the project manager and also the project engineer. But I would be remiss to let you know that there were quite a few people behind the scenes uh who were also involved with this project. It's it's not a two-person effort. It's a many-person effort. And um without mentioning every all these names, these are the other people involved. Next, please. So what's on the agenda for tonight? Well, I gave you the introductions. This is the agenda. I'll give you a timeline of this uh of all the activities that took place. I'll briefly talk to you about each section of the Parks Master Plan. And then at the end, there'll be a Parks Manager's Report. Okay, we started on Halloween uh two thousand and nineteen and um we had or in in less than a month, we were already holding stakeholder and staff interviews. Uh, got a great deal of input. It was in-person interviews. Um, it took a day. Uh, then we held our first workshop um after doing a a great deal of site visits and doing a lot of research. We were able to hold our first workshop in early January. Then all of a sudden, well, all of a sudden, then in March, uh we get the coronavirus and the we're locked down and we had to come up with an optional plan for doing public outreach virtually. And then we were able to start it up again in September, uh our second Parks Master Plan. Then we submitted a draft to the city staff for review, uh made any revisions and changes at that point. And then submitted it to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And they had a meeting on October twenty-first and then a second meeting on December tenth. And we got some great input and some great comments. And then here we are tonight, February third. Next, please. So what's in it? There's nine sections or nine chapters. There's an executive summary and there's a great deal of appendices in the back of the report. The appendices include the many of the or all of the um uh the surveys. Uh, it includes uh cost estimates um and a few other items as well. The executive summary, I think we we tried to do a good job of reducing the the contents of the report, the master plan into about twenty-six pages. And and hopefully, they were that was pretty concise and was real helpful. Next. As I mentioned, the executive summary is an overview of all the sections and key subsections of the document. In the introduction, uh it's typically what you find in in the introduction. That's why I do a Parks Master Plan, which will become a framework for all future parks in the city. It 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 tells you how the document is organized and it discusses your location and of course, a a regional con- uh context. And it's a great location. It's uh sort of midway between the population centers. Um, you you get a lot of traffic on your way to the on on the way to the ocean. Uh, I I happen to drive by there quite a bit and stop several times as well. Um, but anyway, this is what's in the introduction. Next. Uh, and then then we have a a section two, which includes demographics, um population, age distribution, race, the city households, social economics, health and related issues. Now regarding the population forecast, you know, obviously, this helps prepare the city for park space required as the city grows every five years, um when it will be over fifty-two thousand residents by twenty thirty-five. Next. You might see yourself in this image. This first workshop was very successful uh with well over a hundred people who were in attendance at this event. Um, it was great to see this many people. And I have to tell you, um doing similar public outreach events with a lot of other cities, we never get this kind of of people that this kind of turnout. We're lucky to get thirty. The maximum is usually sixty, but to have over a hundred, it says a lot about your community and it shows that they're very interested in in parks, in recreation in your city. So what's in section three? Well, first, it's a description of our outreach plan. And then um when the pandemic hit, we had to have a an update on how to conduct public outreach and uh virtually. Um, it has a list of some of the initial vision and goals. Uh, and that came out of what was in our original project scope and in some of the previous uh Parks Master Plans. That's how we came up with that. Uh, later, we get we got a a an entirely new list of vision and goals or that we added to it that came out from the community. We have a summary of the interviews uh from the stakeholder meetings and workshops and then also a summary of surveys and responses. And I'll probably give you just a few of those survey responses and workshop responses in this um as we go through section three. The vision that we started with was a vision that's that's been your vision um uh for for years now. Create community through people, parks and programs. And we use that vision and and throughout the document and throughout the master plan. Next. So what was in the results of the survey? Well, first of all, there were three items that were most desired by the community. Number one was a skate park. Number two was the pickleball and similar court games. And number three was a splash park. That was the order. That was the most desired um amenities that people were looking for. They also wanted a regional sports park. About ninety-six percent were interested in one. And they and over three fourths wanted to see it on the west side of the city. And about three fourths also wanted to see an outdoor swimming pool. So some more updates on what was in the surveys. I won't go through all of them because there were quite a few, but um the pickleball and tennis courts, they were looking at two locations, one at Pacheco and one in uh some somewhere else in the downtown area. A large playground and and signage were some of the most desired amenities at all city parks. Restrooms uh came up quite a bit and they were particularly looking at a restroom at Crest Hills and and also at basin parks with soccer. The trails, they wanted to see lighting, trash containers and benches. And then, of course, we've seen this most often. Uh, with the brutal summers we get in the Central Valley, they wanted to see shade, 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 whether it was in the form of shade trees or shade structures. That was one of the most commonly seen uh responses. Next. Then section four looks at trends. We looked at local trends. Merced, what's going on in Merced recently, what's going on in Plinita and what's going on in Gusteau. We looked at what's going on in those cities. Then we looked regionally at uh what's happening in the central and southern California and the Bay Area. And then what's happened? What are some of the trends that are happening happening nationally? Next. So briefly, what are some of those trends? Well, finding ways to combat obesity and opioid opioid use. Obviously, obesity was with increasing activities at some of the parks. Opioid use is to try to um not create hiding places if you try to avoid them. Use of technology, that was also a trend. Monitoring systems, drones, esports. Dog parks, which you have one under construction now, theme playgrounds and splash parks. Now, theme playgrounds are typically a large playground that has a theme like perhaps in the Central Valley, we often see railroads as a theme. Splash parks, one of the more common splash park themes we've seen is the ocean. Uh, pickleball and pickleball is not for um just the seniors. Pickleball is for all ages. Outdoor yoga was popular. And then connecting parks with trails and greenways uh throughout the community. Now, you've got a great system of trails and I know that there's um more to come. Greenways are the typically those spaces that you see at the end of cul-de-sacs that link the people that live on those streets uh to many of the parks. Um, I see that's uh pretty common throughout your city. And then revenue streams. How do how do you pay for some of this stuff? Uh, there's a number of ways to do that. And one of them, of course, is this picnic shelter rentals. And and we 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 also heard from one of the earlier meetings that some of your residents, yes, they're willing to pay rentals to to um secure a spot at a picnic shelter. Next, please. Inventory and needs assessment. This is what's analyst uh analysis. This is what's in chapter five. So what's in every park and every facility within Los Banos uh park system is identified and summarized. So all fifty parks and facilities are listed. There's a summary of each and each one identifies its different needs. Access to the parks. What type of roadways are best suited uh for each different park? Obviously, uh a local a local park or a a pocket park uh should not be adjacent to an arterial roadway. So this is just what you can find in that section. Uh, we address the Americans with the Disabilities Act. And we identify the needs at each park, whether it's access from the street uh to this to a sidewalk ramp, to the park itself, or even access to playgrounds, ADA access to playgrounds. Those are all listed in that. And they're easily identified in the form of a chart that you can find in this particular chapter. Then a service in their area analysis. Now, I know this is Joe's Joe will admit this is one of his favorites. And let's go to take a look at that, which I did. Next slide, please, which identifies the distances from park. Now, you look at this, all the parks are identified. This is the city limit, the city, and all the parks are identified. The little blue are pocket parks. And there's typically a a quarter mile radius or a five-minute walk. The yellow is a circle ident- or I'm sorry, yeah, yellow is a circle identifying the neighborhood parks. And that's typically a ten-minute walk. And then the large pink circles are um are are community parks. And that's typically a one to three mile uh drivable radius. Um, and if you look at this park, you're this city is very well parked. And except for a small corner in the south in the southeast section. But yeah, you're doing a great job of making sure all the people live within a comfortable walking, driving or biking distance to all the parks in your city. Next, please. So section six, the level of service analysis. What we looked at is what some of the guidelines are nationally. NRPA, National Recreation of Park Association. What are some what are the current city standards? And we looked at a comparison of city standards with other cities of comparable land area and population. Uh, and we'll we'll go over that in this small in this little table that I have here briefly. And then what will the proposed city standards be? So what came out of this? Basically, because you have a very well parked city, um that you are you are um uh you have parks that are with, as I mentioned earlier, a comfortable walking or biking distance for the majority of the people that live there. And the fact that your park your park ratio, your acreage ra- ratio is equal to or better than other California cities of comparable population and land area. So with that, our recommendation is that the six point three acres per one thousand residents is working and it's working quite well. So we're recommending that that remains your um your park ratio here uh throughout the master plan process. Next, please. So what, after looking at the population and how it's going to increase, what were some of the things? I won't go over everything at this point. I'll just go over a couple of them. But the park acreage needs to increase to about one hundred acres um or six point five acres per year by the year twenty thirty-five. And a lot of that, of course, will be accomplished with when new development comes in and new parks are built for each little community. But and and that's all some of that will will happen. Now, there's been a great deal of interest in a regional park facility. And um with that, in the addition of trails and and uh some of the development of the vacant area of Egg Sports Complex, that should also help meet uh your ninety-eight acres by the year twenty thirty-five. Next, please. As I mentioned a little while ago, we wanted to take a a look at other cities of comparable size and comparable area um in comparable comparable population. Hollister, Delano, Manteca and El Central were the four cities that we looked at. And then when we did an average of those standards, as you can see here, uh your current standard for pocket parks and neighborhood parks at three point three five is better than the average of those four comparable cities we looked at. For community parks, your current standards of basically one point eight acres for every thousand residents is better than the average of those four cities I identified. Um, as far as specialty parks and trails, you also have a standard, current standard is one point one five per thousand. There was no standard available for those four cities, four cities. And then for regional parks, where's there was no available standard yet because there are no um um regional parks in these cities. But we did come up with a standard for you that you'll see here. Typically, one per region based on a two point five acres per one thousand population of the region. And there's more in the report. Next, please. Next please. So under focus areas, um, we, we took a look at the sports complex, the Colorado ballpark, a regional sports complex, an aquatic center, and then there were other future projects to consider. I just wanted to read one thing that I wrote down here because I didn't want anybody to think, after looking at the reports, that we're making a re- a recommendation for the location of some of these things. Because those locations will, will come um, uh, further down the, the pipe. But um, first, these concept studies were prepared on sites that were merely suggested and not necessarily the actual sites where these focused area parks may be located. The studies were prepared to gather input on what amenities would be best suited to meet the community's needs and interests. So with that in mind, let's go to the next slide and we'll talk about what kind of surface is the most desired types of amenities for each of those um, different types of parks? Well, obviously export's complex, that's already there in the northeast part of the city. What people looked for, this is the order of preference right here. Tennis and pickleball, a natural environment with trails and more picnic areas and picnic pavilions. Next. Now for the Colorado ballpark, the preference was, were this, there was a tie with the skate park and tennis and pickleball. There was also a tie between improving the ball fields and adding picnic areas. That's what came out of those uh, those surveys relative to each of those, this focus area. Next please. The regional sports complex, what did people want to see there? They wanted to see court games, number one, soccer and football, number two, baseball and basketball, number three. And then restrooms and concession stand, number four. Next. And aquatic center. The preferences were, they wanted a clubhouse that would cater to large event spaces and lar- have a kitchen. Um, that way they could have parties uh, with the pool. Um, the, have a competition pool with diving was number two. And then a small children's pool with an area for swim lessons was number three. So um, section eight deals with park design and development guidelines. And what it does, it identifies characteristics typical of each park uh, classification. Uh, pocket park, uh, neighborhood park, community park, the um, um, regional park, trails and your specialty parks. It also includes guidelines for various amenities that should be provide, should be provided for each park. And it's listed as both minimal guidelines or minimal amenities that should be provided for each type of park. And then of course, optional amenities too. And then uh, there's also guidelines for the types of amenities based on population. Um, for example, one dog park for, for every fifty thousand residents, which is what you have under construction. One skate park for fifty thousand residents. Um, let me give you just a couple more. Um, one, one soccer field for every five thousand residents. At least one restroom for every six thousand persons. And one tennis slash pickleball court for every seven, seventy-five hundred persons. So those, that gave you some um, some ideas, what are, what are some of the guidelines that are identified in section eight? Next please. Section nine uh, is the action plan. Um, this is where all the meat of the project is here. We list actually sixty-nine goals and policies for the next fifteen years. Now, some of those policies came out of previous master plans, some of those policies uh, were not met. Um, and we're, we, we're good enough to add here because they could be met or should be met. Some of these are ongoing policies from some of the previous master plans. But mostly, the policies come from listening to the input from both uh, parks and recreation staff and from the citizens, from the residents that live in Los Bonos. And that's where most of these goals and policies came from. We also got some input from the parks and recommission as well. What else does this chapter do? Well, prioritizes projects, both new and renovations, based on several key factors. Uh, it includes construction and renovation cost estimates for each park. Now these priority tables or charts are identified as high priority, medium priority and low priority. Now, they can easily be adjusted depending on what your needs are. Depending on like uh, the input that we hear from um, both your districts, your council districts as well as the communities. So we wanted to let you know that, that list is actually a guide. But um, if you need adjustments, that's fine. But that's how we based it, is on the key factors that are identified here, listening to the community, uh, listening to the Parks and Rec staff and listening to Parks and Rec, Park and Rec Commission. There's also a budget and funding analysis, basically that looks at where all the grants are. Uh, state, federal funds, grants, partnerships, private and corporate foundations, et cetera. So there's, there's, there's lots of money out, out there, you just have to pursue it. And uh, so we list all of those that are identified in this chapter. We also identify staffing, oops, we also identify staffing and operating expenses guidelines based on your population projections for the next five year, or for every five years. And then also, we also talk about, we, we address cost guidelines by, by park classification and amenities in, in a comparison with uh, National Recreation Park Area, uh, Park Association standards. Um, that way you can develop your own CIP uh, over five year periods. Next. And then finally, the, there's a great deal of uh, there's a lot in the appendix. In each of the appendices, this is some of the list, there's maps in there, there's uh, survey results. Uh, and there's some detailed cost estimates. We included the previously done cost estimate for Pacheco Park as well. So um, and, and also there's some meeting notes from the Parks and Rec, Recreation Commission. Uh, so anyway, that's what's in the appendices, next please. I, I had to do this, I had to add this. Um, it's a pat on the back, I admit, but this came from the, the um, Parks and Recreation Commission. We're very pleased to, to get this kind of input from them. But we did get a unanimous uh, approval uh, to recommend the master plan for approval to the city council. And um, there's some of their comments here. They thought that the, our team did a great job, elaborate thoughtful plan. Um, they've heard good things from the community and like I said, that, working with your community has been wonderful. I mean, we've got a great deal of input. I enjoyed working with our staff, had a great time working with your, with the residents of the city of Los Bonos. There was a very, they felt it was a very thorough plan and incorporates all the suggestions heard from those surveys and meetings. They applaud his framework for the next few decades and they liked the detailed focus area site plans that you saw on the report. Um, and the plans can be accommodated to meet future needs as well. So with that, um, I hope that's an adequate summary of what's in the document. And I'm open to questions, uh, and those, Spencer is on hand. Um, Joe can answer questions as well and I'm here too to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll go to council and see, uh, any questions, uh, Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Lambert?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I got just one question. Uh, on uh, the renovation and the future construction of the, uh, possibly the playgrounds. Uh, right now, as we see it, we have the wood chips that are in the playgrounds, in the play areas. Have, have we looked into possibly using, utilizing the rubber mulch? Uh, the only reason why I ask is uh, i- i- in the past, you know, we've had a few fires and the mulch is actually easy to catch fire. You know, we've had kid, you know, start the structures on fire. Um, it, it's just something I want, I just wanted to, you know, ask, uh, is it possible for the rubber mulch?
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll answer that. Uh, so it's something that we have talked about and looked at. Um, uh, primary reason that we have, have gone with wood chips, there is one park with sand gardens, three uh, park, but every other park has the wood chips. The primary reason is that the costs to install the, the rubber surfacing is, is quite significant. And be, it would be a, in, you know, ten, fifteen years when that wore out, it would be a significant project. It would be a thirty, fifty thousand dollar project to do that, rather than being able to um, the fill in that, those chips over time on a, a low, lesser cost. Um, as far as, you know, being a, a fire risk, those sorts of things. The wood fiber is uh, does have fire retardant in it. Um, I, the thing is though, when those play, the, I know, and uh, I mean, just before I started, there was two and uh, we had replaced them just when I first started um, fires with the playgrounds. And with those fires, they were melting the metal on there. So uh, anything is going to, that, that, the rubber surfacing, even if it has the fire retardness in it, uh, it's still going to get melted. So um, that's, that's, that's kind of the issue with, with that. Now, one area that we are uh, definitely wanting to go with rubber surfacing in the future is if we have a situation where we have a playground next to a splash pad. Um, and that's because kids will trap that, those wood chips with their feet over to that splash pad and it's just one more thing for maintenance to have to deal with. Um, so that's something that I know across the board, I've always got the recommendation to do rubber surfacing next to that. Um, if that situation comes up. But um, ta- definitely, I know I've gone to a lot, a number of communities, a, a number of, of very awesome parks that have the rubber surfacing. I, I don't have anything against them, against it other than the cost and the cost for um, replacement i- in time and ensuring that we have the resources to do that and aren't, aren't uh, putting ourselves out of compliance while we wait for a budget to, to come through that, that can replace that surfacing. But um, certainly something that I'd like to see in the future at least a couple parks.
And then I can answer that too, with the, many of the cities, we, we, we do, we do work on a lot of parks. We have designed and been involved with a lot of parks and park construction. But most of the cities, in fact, maybe all the cities that we work with, they do use that wood fiber, which is a, like you said, it's a, a flame retardant uh, material. And it's most commonly used in many parks throughout the valley. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lewis, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a few. Um, but my question is directed to Mike on the first one. Um, with the ratios that you gave on uh, section six about the level of service and analysis, um, that our standards were higher than three of, three other cities, uh, Delano, Manteca and El Centro that you had evaluated. Is there a state standard uh, as to how many parks uh, per thousand people you need to have in your community?
There is no state standard and the reason being is because the National Park and Recreation Association and the California Park and Recreation Association have decided like within the last five to ten years that each city adopt its own because um, they, they, they realized that not every standard that they used to identify works for every city. And so what they've done is they, they've decided now each city should determine what's best suited for them.
Okay. All right, and then the next question I have, uh, probably, you know, I'm not sure if you will answer this or if, if Joe can answer this. I know that, you know, our, our first meeting that we had, there was certainly a lobby um, done to make sure that the skateboarders were at the meeting and the pickleball people were at the meeting. And it, it appears that, you know, they continue to be um, active throughout this process uh, of evaluation for services uh, of what they would like to have and where they would like to have it. Um, one of the things that, that certainly I want to see are, are numbers, you know? It's like, what is this all gonna cost us? Uh, because I'm thinking about uh, like our regional park. You know, we, we're, if we have a regional park, we can have those tournaments there. That could be revenue to the city uh, to help offset the cost of what you need to do as far as providing recreation to your community, whether it's a splash pad or anything else. You know, those, those dollars that come in um, uh, will help offset those costs. Now, I know that, you know, the pickleball community uh, spoke about uh, tournaments throughout various places. But, you know, I, I certainly would like to see some dollar numbers as to exactly where these uh, um, tournaments are held and how much, what, do we anticipate that this is gonna bring to our community uh, to facilitate the number of courts that they're asking for? Um, and I'm not trying to, you know, raise a stink or anything, but in order for this whole process to work, it has to be money coming in uh, in perpetuity to support this. It, it just can't be all coming out of the city budget on a regular basis. Um, so that, that's my big concern is that if, if, as we move forward, uh, yes, we, we can hopefully provide some of these services, maybe not in the larger scale that these two groups want. Because there are other things that are out there that are more popular, that will bring in more revenue to our city to help support what they want as well as some of the other amenities that people want, like a splash pad and um, or at some far future thing, I can only imagine a swimming pool in our community. So, you know, that, that's just something I, I hope this council will consider is, is that the requests are, are good and, and it's a good thing that we've planned. Uh, and I'm happy to see the input from our community. But the bottom line is that, that we have to be able to bring enough revenue in to support these ideas that are being brought forward. And, you know, there's football, basketball and soccer, we know is, is a big thing throughout uh, the state of California. And um, I'm, I'm pretty sure we can have some major tournaments here if we had more soccer fields to hold that, those kinds of events. So that's just my input on that and um, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas, any questions of staff?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're very pleased to see this and we will be sure that this does not, that, this does not go on a shelf. Uh, it will be a planning document and we will pursue every dimension, both financial and um, logistical, to bring as much great park service to our citizens as we can. Thank you for the outstanding report. And so now the chair will undertake a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number Sixty-three Twenty-One.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Lewis, do I have a second?
Uh, no, I was gonna say, uh, I'll make the motion to adopt uh, Resolution Number Sixty-three Twenty-One as read by.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilman Jones, I'll second that.
Councilmember Jones, so I have a motion by Mayor Portim Lewis and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve City Council Resolution Number Six Three Two One. Roll call vote, Ms. Maloney?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Harria?
Yes, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, thank you uh, Parks and Rec and uh, Public Works and our presenters. Thank you so much, outstanding work. And we will continue, well, as I said, these, these do not go on shelves, these are planning documents and we will con- continue working on these to bring them all to fruition as much as we can, providing revenue source and everything else. Thank you so much. Uh, now we'll move to item ten. Consideration of Adoption City Council Resolution Number Sixty-three Twenty-Two. Approving and authorizing the city attorney to execute an engagement letter with Nielsen Merximer to provide legal services in connection with the redistricting of its city council electoral districts following the twenty twenty census. And for this item, we go to city attorney, Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, I think some of you were on the council back in two thousand fourteen when the city transitioned from uh, at-large electoral uh, process to a, by district election, election process. Uh, since then, we've been through, I think, three election cycles, sixteen, eighteen and the most recent in twenty. Um, under state law, uh, at the, after each uh, ten year census is completed, uh, the, the, the city has to go through a process to take a look at its district boundaries and whether or not state law requires redistricting to. look at its district boundaries, and whether or not state law requires redistricting to make sure that the population in each district is balanced in accordance with state law. So as you all may know, the 2020 census is coming close to being finished, although I believe it may not be actually adopted and finished and ready to move until early fall of this year. But what we want to do tonight is kind of get a jump on things, because the process for the redistricting is quite a complex process, and we'd like to be ready to roll when that census is actually finalized. Last time, we did this in 2014, actually, I don't think I had gray hair back then, but I do now. We used the law firm of Nielsen Merksmar to help us and to guide us through this process. Subsequent to 2014, the process has gotten much more complex and difficult due to legislation that's gone through the state, as to exactly what we have to do in terms of outreach, and what the criteria are for reforming our districts. So I've invited Chris Scannell tonight, who guided us the last time we went through this, to just give a brief presentation, and we're asking the council tonight to approve their engagement letter and authorize me to go ahead and sign that letter and to commence the process. So at that point, I will turn it over to Chris.
Thanks, Bill. And thank you all for having me. It's a pleasure to be with you. Again, it's been a few years, but I recognize a couple of you, and it's nice to meet, meet the new faces. As Bill said, I'm, I want to walk through a brief presentation. When I say brief, I mean very brief. I, I understand you have a packed agenda, so I'm going to try and keep this to 10 minutes. But my goal is really to talk, lay the groundwork for what's to come. I want to talk very briefly about the process of redrawing the lines, kind of the timing, the, the new rules that Bill alluded to, and the role of council in the process. So if we could go to the first slide, please. In terms of timing, this is a big one. Things are like everything else in the world these days, abnormal. In the past, when the Census Bureau puts out its data under state federal law, it's required to put it out by April 1st of the year following the year the census is taken. So in 2011, it came out, and actually, usually, they do it early, so it was like February 2011. This year, it was supposed to be out by April 1st, 2021. They're not going to make that, that deadline. They've already announced, you know, we were, we were expecting them to be a little bit late, you know, maybe May, but they announced last week that they don't anticipate having the sort of detailed data that we need for redistricting until, I think, earliest August, of course. It could even be later than that. And then, under new changes to state law that have taken place in the last decade, that data needs to be taken by a state, statewide database at UC Berkeley, and they adjust it. And what they're doing is they are reassigning incarcerated residents of state prisons back from the prison where they're counted by the Census Bureau to their last known place of residence. And so the, the statewide database has already announced that it anticipates that's going to take an additional month. So right there, instead of starting this process as we would have hoped to do, and as we normally would have done in the spring, we're looking at probably getting the data to kick it off, you know, start drawing maps in September, or maybe even late, you know, late September. And then there's a, an additional lag built into state law. This is also new. It, the city has to wait at least three weeks from the release of that, those adjusted data from the statewide database before it can draw maps. So it's, it's going to be a later process than usual, which means a little bit more of a crunch, because we're going to be doing this at the same time as, you know, County Merced, and all the cities up and down the state, and the school districts, and everybody else. Can we go to the next slide, please? In terms of, of when the city needs to wrap it up, so, you know, that's, that's kind of, we get it, and we start drawing maps in October, we haven't, the city has until April 17th of 2022 to finish it. You know, it's, counts back from the next city election in November of 2022. Failure to meet that deadline, you know, makes it possible for then, any interested resident to go into the Merced County Superior Court and ask the court to take over the process. But, so I don't think we're going to have an issue hitting that deadline, but I just, so you know how that would work. As a practical matter, though, it may actually get a little bit earlier, because the registrar has to implement all of these. And so they need to take the maps and make sure that all the voters get assigned and everything else. But we're looking at, you know, the spring of 2022. We go to the next slide. In terms of the process, state law, you know, 10 years ago, all that was required was two public hearings, and that was it. The council could just adopt a map at that point. You know, you could choose to have more, but that, that was the baseline. Under state law changes, the Fair Maps Act, which was adopted in 2019, now the council has to have at least 14, or, sorry, four, four hearings. And it's divvied up so that at least one of those hearings has to be conducted before maps are released by the city, and at least two of them have to be conducted after the maps are released. And then, yeah, the, the fourth required hearing can be either before or after. And the, the law now requires that at least one of those hearings be conducted either on a Saturday or a Sunday, or on a weekday after 6:00 p.m., so that people who might not normally be able to get to an earlier or a weekday council meeting or hearing have a chance to participate. There are new requirements for how far in advance the hearings have to be noticed, unlike the Brown Act, which is a three-day head start. You know, all of these hearings have to be noticed at least five days ahead. And slight change, they, with their agendas, I would have to not only specify the exact time that they're to be held, but the council has to actually hold it at that time. So if it says 8 o'clock, and you reach 8 o'clock on the clock, you know, you could finish up the, the agenda item that you're on at that moment. But then if it's, you know, three or four items down the agenda to, to the public hearing for this matter, it has to be bumped forward to be held next. If we could go to the next slide, please. There are also new requirements for public outreach to members of the community. So the council now has an obligation to try and encourage public participation by reaching out to media organizations, good government groups, civil rights groups, civic groups in the area. Live translation is now required, if, if requested, at least 72 hours in advance. And the Secretary of State is supposed to provide us with a list of the languages that would be pertinent within each city. I think we can pretty much assume that Spanish will be one of them, but we'll see, there may be additional ones that will require translation. Again, I mentioned publication of all the notices, that needs to be done on the internet and all the other normal places. The, the new rule is also that there has to be at least a seven-day sort of cooling-off period between the time the, the, a map is, is published publicly and before the council adopts it, so that there's at least that amount of time for the public to, to view it and weigh in. It's kind of meant to prevent last-minute changes. All of the demographic data and all of the maps have to be posted online. And now, you know, we have to actively permit the submission of maps by members of the public, both electronically and in paper. You know, it was always kind of a possibility in the past, you know, lots of people would send in a paper map with something scrawled on it, or they'd email something in. But now the, the city has an obligation to, to facilitate that process. We can go, we go. Also new in terms of record-keeping, the, the council needs to have a website to keep all of the relevant materials online. So that includes an explanation of the process, procedures for how to participate, calendar and notices of workshops, agendas, maps, and also, every time there's a, a public hearing is conducted, it needs to be recorded, and all of those recordings and minutes need to be put on the website within two weeks of the hearing. So we go to the next slide, please. So, you know, I, I'm not going to walk through this in detail. Again, I understand you have a lot on your plate tonight, but what I've put together here is a, a brief sort of sample timeline for how this process would play out between now and next April. And you see, you know, we're kind of anticipating, putting together a website in the spring and into the summer, getting all of that stuff ready to go, so that when the data come out, we're ready to hit the ground running. And also, the, the city has the option, as I said, it, it has to hold at least one of its four public hearings before maps are produced. So, you know, to, to give a little bit of head start in light of the crunch, we have the option of conducting at least one and maybe two of those hearings before that, so that we can start to get input from the public, educate the public on what's going on, and get input from them on criteria, and in particular, you know, the existing maps and what the communities of interest are in the city that should be taken into account in this process. And that way, when the, the data come out and we're able to actually start drawing maps, we have that head start, can start to incorporate it into the initial round of maps, because we already know what people are saying. So if we could go to the last slide. And then in terms of, Bill mentioned that the rules are a bit different now. When we did this in 2014, the, the general rules governing the drawing of lines were pretty simple. You know, you had to follow federal law. You know, that's still the case. Those are the, the sort of overarching requirements. The districts have to be roughly equal in population, has to follow the Voting Rights Act, and no racial gerrymandering. But in most cases, in, in the 2014 process, meeting those criteria are not that difficult. So where the, the rubber hits the road, and where the changes have occurred, is with respect to sort of the, within those outer boundaries. You know, six years ago, the council had virtually, you know, not completely, but virtually unlimited discretion in what it could do in terms of drawing those lines. You know, what made sense, how to, what criteria to take into account, how to take them into account, how to balance them. I, I mentioned, though, that the Fair Maps Act adopted last year. The legislature has now limited that discretion somewhat. It now sets out a list of specific criteria, these four I listed here, in order, so that, you know, the, the top one, geographic contiguity, is the most important, and it has to prevail over anything else, except for, again, the federal law requirements. And below that, then, making sure to unify as much as possible neighborhoods and communities of interest. That's more important under state law than following easily identifiable boundaries, which are streets, cities, I'm sorry, streets, city boundaries, railroad tracks, that sort of thing. And last, all the way at the bottom is compactness. So, you know, only after you've done all of those, do you worry about, does this district look, you know, nice? Does it, is it compact? And then, you know, after all, you've taken all of those things into account, then you might factor in things like avoiding head-to-head contests between incumbents, minimizing how many voters get shifted from one district to the other, that sort of thing. But those are traditional criteria that historically we would have taken into account, but because the legislature has not included them in this list, they, they basically can only be taken into account as long as the map already complies with those others. So, you know, long story short, the council will have less discretion. That doesn't mean no discretion. Obviously, within the, even within these criteria and these, the priority, there are still choices to be made. You know, what are the communities of interest? How do you decide whether they go together, whether they get split? You know, if you do have to divide them, which ones are to be divided? So it, it's not, it's not a completely mechanical process by any stretch. It still requires judgment, and it still requires the council to review the maps and decide, having, you know, maps that meet all of these criteria, what makes the most sense for the city. And so with that, you know, as I said, I'm trying to wrap it up. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, or talk about any, any further parts of the process.
Thank you very much. We'll go to council for questions. Mr. Jones?
No questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No questions, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Lewis?
As usual, I'm probably the one that asks the questions. So I would like to go back to the presentation, page seven and eight, I think it is. Page seven? Okay. So you were indicating that equal access is generally the guideline for the census
Yes.
information to be done. And, and I would assume that's the federal, or does that include the state portion as well?
It's just the federal. Historically, the state portion, that, that, the state part is new.
Okay, that's the counting of the prisoners. It's, okay. So with them not being able to complete their task by April 1st and pushing it back to September, but they're still requiring the cities to be, to have their work done by April, April 17th of 2022, which is not a full year that you normally would get to complete what you have to do.
That's right. It's, you know, there's a possibility, there are rumors, although who knows how serious they are, that the legislature may make additional changes to help soften the blow. I mean, I, it's probably enough time, you know, be, be grateful you're not a county. Merced County has to get its, its plan done by December 15th of this year. So it's going to have about two months for, for its process. But it is going to be a compacted timeline. And, you know, under the current statutes, unfortunately, this is the best we can do unless the legislature in its infinite wisdom sees fit to give us a little bit more time. The problem that you run into, though, is that the, the registrars, as I said before, they need enough lead time to get it in place before candidate filing opens in July of next year. So, you know, the further you push back that, that map deadline, you know, the, the more you crunch them in terms of getting all of those voters reassigned, and, and in terms of, you know, candidates who are running for, for election next year, they want to know what the districts are, so they know where to start raising money and where to start reaching out to, to voters.
Okay. All right. And then on page eight, could you, could you just give me some examples of the number one and number two, the geographical continuum? Exactly, how does that apply?
Yeah. You know, the contiguity, you think is a pretty, pretty simple idea, right? You don't want to have separate parts of the district with stuff in between. Where it mostly becomes an issue is where there's water, or where there are county islands, for example. And, you know, the, basically, this, the, there is, there's always been kind of discretion to figure out how to deal with that in the past. Now, the legislature has, has prescribed how those things are to be dealt with. So, you know, you're not supposed to cross a body of water unless there's a bridge, or there's a, you know, a ferry or something like that. Not that that's a particularly big issue in your case. But, you know, the, the county islands potentially would be an issue. You don't want to, you know, have to go out of the district and then back into it, that sort of thing. You know, it's not, I don't want to say it's never an issue, because there are some cities with very strange, strange boundaries. I, I don't think it's likely to be a, a big issue in Los Banos, just because of the geography, but occasionally it does come up. And then you, oh, and then you asked about the second one.
Yes.
Neighborhoods and communities of interest, really, there's not a hard, fast rule about how to identify those. It, it's, it's really what the, the local population thinks it is. So, you know, I come into, to town, I don't know what the, the sort of accepted or, or recognized neighborhoods are as an outsider, but you do, and you're, you know, the, the voters and the people who live in Los Banos, too. And so the way we identify these is primarily, you know, we can use planning documents and that sort of thing, but it's really primarily based on what the public and what you tell us. You know, what, what neighborhoods are sort of unified neighborhoods that make sense to keep together, and that share common interests, and should be represented together? You know, what are the, the other communities of interest? And, and it can be just about anything. You know, the, the, one of the old examples that I like to give is when we were doing Phoenix some years back, the, the people who owned historic brick buildings in the downtown came in and said, hey, we're a community of interest, we all want to be together in the district. Well, okay. They were. I mean, the, the council agreed and put them into a single district. But it, you know, it's, it's really sort of whatever people think it is with respect to sensible representation.
So then that would also mean, like, in number three, I think, was our, our first map, each Each district was supposed to touch a part of downtown, which it it eventually did not happen that way. But that was kind of the planning. Uh, it really would have, I think, caused some crazy division and dividing up and cutting to make that happen. But I would assume ease of of identifiable boundaries would mean like a a certain block of area that you're gonna put in a district and making sure that the numbers, uh, the population numbers were as equal as as much as possible.
Yeah. Yeah, so you want to be following, you know, major streets, you know, not not. The, yeah, the idea behind the third one is is people understand what the boundaries are, you know? My district runs from Main Street to the railroad tracks, you know? So that they they kind of have a a common sense of what it is as opposed to some some random, you know, uh, utility right-of-way that nobody knows anything about or something like that.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Yamas, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for the excellent presentation. It's very complex stuff, and the timeframe is definitely compressed. Uh, and add virtual reality to everything. We have our hands full, but it'll go smoothly. We'll we'll map it all out, and it'll go smoothly, we'll get it done. And thank you. So, uh, there's a a resolution here, uh, and that is to adopt City Resolute, City Council Resolution Number sixty-three twenty-two. And shall I entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lambert here. I'd like to make the motion to accept the Resolution Six Three Two Two as it reads.
Thank you. I have a second.
Mr. Mayor, Yamas, I'll second that.
Thank you. I I have a motion by Mr. Councilmember Lambert and the second by Councilmember Yamas. To City Council Resolution Number Six Three Twenty-Two as the right title. Roll call vote, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Once again, thank you, Mr. Vaughn, and thank you to our presenter from Nielsen Merximer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
All right. Number eleven, uh, is to appoint Commissioner to the Tree Commission. Uh, there are, uh, two vacancies. Uh, we have one candidate to appoint tonight, and that is, uh, Mr. Tom Calgen. And I would make that motion and entertain a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
A motion by the mayor, second by Councilmember Lambert, to appoint Mr. Tom Calgen to the Tree Commission, with a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Roll call vote, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Item twelve, consideration of appointment of one council member to serve on the League of California Cities Central Valley Division Executive Committee and one council member to serve as an alternate. Uh, Mayor Valalta established, uh, at the time that the mayor would be the primary representative and the mayor pro tem would be the alternate. And I would like to continue that. So I would move to appoint myself, uh, on the executive committee, and Mayor Pro Tem Lewis as the alternate. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
I have a motion by the mayor and a second by Councilmember Lambert to appoint Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem to the League of Cities Central Valley Division Executive Committee. Roll call vote, Ms. Melanie?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Aria?
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. And now we move to our COVID nineteen status update. City Manager Tarasus.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Sonya, if you could bring up that that website, please, just the Merced County COVID, uh, data dashboard. So, uh, just wanted to highlight, um, the the information that's available on the Merced County website, um, as part of the COVID update, uh, this evening. Uh, this is the vaccine distribution tab on the website. Um, as you'll see, uh, on the website, it it lists the number of doses that are currently available. Um, and unfortunately, that number is referenced as zero, uh, in Merced County. Um, again, unfortunately, if you go, but if you go down to, uh, on the on the portal, the num, total number of vaccines that have been administered is eleven thousand, eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-five. Um, and what that reflects is a three percent, um, uh, a three percent vaccine rate in our county, which is a total population of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So, um, this reflects that vaccine distribution continues to be a challenge uh, for the state of California, uh, which is resulting in a a low number of doses being available in Merced County, unfortunately. Um, and I I normally wouldn't, wouldn't read, um, wouldn't read as part of my report, uh, a prepared statement, but, um, I do have a press release from the county of Merced uh, that was issued over the weekend. Um, and folks can sign up for the receiving these these press releases on the county website, um, if you'd like. But I did want to read briefly, uh, the press release that was issued by Merced County over the weekend. Um, and the headline reads, "Vaccine Shortage Leads to Temporary Pause on Clinics." Uh, due to a national shortage shortage of COVID nineteen vaccine doses, the Merced County Department of Public Health will not host vaccination clinics this week. Uh, all available vaccine doses will be dedicated toward providing the second dose required to complete the vaccination series for those who have already received their initial dose. Excuse me. Uh, while the current vaccine shortage is a nationwide issue, Merced County continues to receive the second worst per capita vaccine allocation in the state. Uh, Merced County has the proper infrastructure, technology, and and communications in place to efficiently distribute the vaccine in large volumes. Uh, to date, doses allocated to Merced County have been quickly distributed in a safe and responsible, uh, manner. Just, uh, as a side note, not part of the press release, but we have had, uh, two very successful clinics in Los Banos, uh, run very well by Merced County Public Health. Uh, so we are absolutely prepared to administer those doses in the county when we do receive them. Uh, in addition to that, fire personnel, uh, have been trained to assist in in administering those vaccines, uh, when and if we receive those doses. Uh, so we are more than ready, uh, here in Merced County, to administer vaccines when we do get them. Uh, just to go back to the press release, uh, this is text in the press release. "The county is working closely with Congressman Costa, Senator Caballero, and Assemblymember Gray, uh, to correct the inequity, this inequity, meaning the low number of doses that we're receiving, uh, by securing a greater number, greater number of vaccine doses," uh, said Darren McDaniel, Chair of the Merced County Board of Supervisors. Um, and as part of that advocacy effort, um, the Merced County mayors did send a letter to the governor, uh, requesting more doses, highlighting the inequity, um, and again, the lack of doses that are coming to Merced County. Um, you, we, we did request the actual data from the county to reflect those low doses. Um, it just, we have not received that data yet from the county. Uh, when I do receive that from the county, I will forward that, uh, to the council. Um, so, uh, again, it's unfortunate, we're not receiving, uh, more more doses of the vaccine here in Merced County. Uh, the infrastructure is here to administer them. Uh, we've also been in contact, um, with the county. They they will be, uh, hiring a a third-party contractor to administer doses uh, of the vaccine if or when they're received. We've identified a couple of locations here in Los Banos, uh, to to administer those additional doses using that third-party contractor. So, again, the, we are, we are ready, uh, to administer those doses when they come our way. Um, it's just dependent upon when we receive those. Um, we'll continue to monitor that situation. We will, uh, be a part of that advocacy effort, uh, when we're asked to. Um, but again, um, low doses of vaccine coming to Merced County. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Council, any questions of Mr. Tarasus regarding COVID nineteen? Mr. Jones?
No comments or questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No questions.
Ms. Lewis?
None, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Yamas?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, the, yes, the mayors did sign a letter, all all six of us in the county. That letter, I believe, has been put up on our city website. Our local legislators are all making a lot of noise. Uh, the number I received was that Pasadena, in relation, received three times the amount of vaccine per capita that Merced County did. And so we are all, uh, politically screaming at Sacramento. And we're not gonna stop until we get proper, uh, service to our people. We have, uh, as Mr. Tarasus said, we have numerous places ready to go to deliver the vaccine, to administer the vaccine, so there will be no problem there. Once we get it, we can get it out. So very pleased with the work everybody's doing towards that. Let's hope that the state of California will do its bit and get us what we need. Thank you once again. Thank you, Mr. Tarasus. Um, now we go to advisement of public notices. Mr. Tarasus?
There are none.
Uh, that would be Community Economic Development Director Elms. Um, and Stacy, do we have any advisements and public notices today? Doesn't look like it.
No report.
No report, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then City Manager Report, Mr. Tarasus?
Uh, thank you, Member, or I'm sorry, Mayor. Just one thing to highlight this this evening, um, and if we could bring it up on on the screen very quickly. Uh, just want to highlight that we are into our second issue of the City of Los Banos, uh, new electronic newsletter. Um, that went out earlier this week. Um, if you received it, uh, I'm hoping you're you're finding, uh, good, useful information in it. Uh, would encourage folks to, uh, subscribe. Uh, we're hoping to use, uh, this new newsletter to share upcoming information with the community, uh, provide information on programs, um, and just another way we're looking at enhancing our communication with, uh, with the community. Uh, there is a button on the City of Los Banos website, uh, that you can go to right on the main page to, uh, sign up to receive the newsletter. So, uh, would encourage, uh, folks and members of the community to subscribe, uh, to our brand-new newsletter. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, that will take us to, uh, my report and update on M C A G, Peninsula Clean Energy and Measure V. Um, M C A G and Measure V Pioneer Pacheco Corridor, uh, is on the city website. And keep checking the city's website for more information about the planning. This is a major project. Our citizens are encouraged to be involved in this so that we can plan our future and how our traffic is going to get through town. Uh, Peninsula Clean Energy is, uh, announcing a community outreach manager position. This is a full-time position, uh, to represent Los Banos. And, uh, they purchase clean energy at lower rates, offer discounted electricity bills. Uh, this position is to represent P C E in Los Banos for the Los Banos citizens. And they want that position in place, uh, in a few months here, over the next few months, so they can have, uh, hit the ground running when we, uh, connect up with the P C E for, uh, clean energy, uh, provided. And so that's my report on item sixteen, which will take us to item seventeen. Councilmember reports, and our first report tonight is Councilmember Yamas.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to add that, uh, want to thank Chief, uh, Breezy, Chief Hurley, City Manager, for, uh, positioning personnel and equipment in response to our recent storm. I just want to commend the people that, uh, were in place, uh, ready to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yamas. And we we all echo that sentiment. Mr. Yamas?
My report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
No report here.
Thank you. And Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. Uh, first of all, uh, I wanted to inform the city and council that, um, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board, um, has put out their, um, election, the the elections for the position that I had applied for. And I was selected to be on that board. And I want to thank, uh, the cities of Atwater and Livingston for their votes, uh, to confirm me to that board. So we have our first meeting this coming Friday. Uh, I will assume that I I'll be sworn in or however they do their process, uh, for this particular board and, um, and learn all all the processes on on what it takes to be on the Dallas Board. So, um, again, uh, thank you to the cities who nominated me and elected me to this this board. And I'm committed to serve, uh, the County of Merced to the best of my abilities to make sure that, uh, we have our fair shake here in the valley regarding, uh, water and air pollution, uh, rules that that govern. Uh, and lastly, uh, this is just a little personal thing for me. Uh, I had a birthday last Wednesday, and as some of you know, uh, my son works for the Warriors. He controls the shot clock. And, uh, Sean Livingston has always been my favorite basketball player on the team, although he's retired now. But my son sent me a text message and said, Mama, I'm gonna call you at halftime. And I'm thinking, okay. And but he never calls anybody when he's on the floor. So he called me and, um, handed the phone over to Sean Livingston. And of course, I was short of words. I I could barely breathe. Uh, I I was just overwhelmed with the kindness of, uh, Sean to even take the time out to wish me a happy birthday. So, uh, he's my number-one player, even though he's retired, he always will be. And, uh, I'm I'm grateful for that opportunity to have a a FaceTime conversation with Sean. And that's my report tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on your birthday. And very pleased to see that the county, that you'll be representing us there on the board. Um, that's a, it's a very large organization that does have a good deal of influence and, uh, to make life better and the air air cleaner. So we're very pleased that we have you there to represent us. Uh, I'll move to my report here. Now, there's a a vaccine vaccination website called My Turn, uh, in the county, and you can look that up. They've been working at getting that rolling. I'm not sure if it's completely up and running yet. Um, and then, uh, speaking of the same thing on health, I had a wonderful conversation with Dr. Yu. He is the manager of our hospital here in Los Banos. They've been adapting to the needs of COVID nineteen. They acquired, they've adapted the hospital and and they've gotten top-line ventilators. And they are, uh, able, right now, they're just able to handle the load. Uh, he said there's a little plateau right now. So let's all continue to work to keep, keep that, uh, from rising. And we will continue to work closely with our hospital for our future plans in Los Banos and serving our community there. Uh, in, uh, of course, when we're in February, we have two presidents' holidays, birthdays, President Washington and President Lincoln. And another, uh, another, uh, February, uh, highlight is Black History Month. And another, another February highlight is Black History Month. And as a musician, Joseph Bologna, you can look him up, Chevalier de Saint George, one of the great African descent composers from the classical period. And there's a, a whole website called Afroclassical where a lot of composers, great composers of African descent did not get recognized through the centuries, but now they are. And we will be getting a proclamation out for that in the second meeting of February. So pleased to announce that. Finally, next time we see you, between now and then, we'll have Valentine's Day. So happy Valentine's Day, enjoy it. And I hope everyone has a great Valentine's Day and a great month of February. And with that, Cheryl entertained a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember, I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Lewis and a second by Councilmember Jones to adjourn the meeting. Roll call?
Jones?
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Faria?
Yes. Meeting adjourned at 6:04 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Night.